It's now 7:00 PM and I'm reconveniencing to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, April 8th, 2024. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Donahue.
Here.
Ms. Demme.
Present.
Ms. Jane.
Here.
Ms. Fosdick.
Here.
Mr. Rising.
Here.
Ms. Gents.
Here.
And Mr. Carubis.
Here.
We have a quorum. Ms. Jane, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have some board salutes today. We'll start with Mr. Carubis.
2024 eSports Champions. The board salute Still Middle School for their achievement as the 2024 eSports Champions after beating Hill Middle School by a score of 11 to 7. eSports, which is funded by the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation, promotes social and emotional skills, integrates portrait of a graduate competencies, and exposes students to STEM career opportunities. Congratulations to all involved.
Ms. Gents.
Special Olympics Illinois State Basketball Tournament. The board salutes the Steps Eagles Basketball Team for a job well done at the Division IV State Championship. Step students Christian Richardson and Matthew Shook both received the sportsmanship award. Congratulations, Steps Eagles.
Mr. Rising.
Okay, I've got some tough names here. Will County Clerk's Office Student Ambassador and Election Judge Program. The board salutes Wabonzi Valley Junior Yegnes Lokish and Seniors Janen Vinyush and Kios Rosellis and Smira Sakaria, as well as Nikwa Valley Juniors Josh Barlin, Savannah Bramsko, and Rihanna Mitra. And Seniors Gresham Batal and Kaylin McGee for enrolling in the Will County Clerk's Office Student Ambassador and Election Judge Program. These students dedicated their time to serving the community and participate in the election process. Thank you for your contributions to the community.
Ms. Fosdick.
Warriors Hockey Club captures fourth consecutive state title. The board salutes the Warriors Hockey Club for capturing their fourth consecutive state title for the combined Blackhawk Cup. The Warriors Hockey Club, which consisted of players from Wabonzi and Matia Valley High Schools, won in overtime by a score of 2 to 1 over Chicago North. Congratulations on this stellar accomplishment.
Ms. Jane.
District 204 students advanced in Nationals in the Reflections Art Program. The board salutes the District 204 students who are advancing to the national level of the Reflections Art Program. Fourteen students will be moving on to national level, including Nitin Srivasan from Patterson Elementary, Anisha Campbell and Veeshnavi Damara from Patterson-Petersen Elementary, Yian Wu Chui from Springbrook Elementary, Mishka Patinaik from White Eagle Elementary, and Addison O'Neil and Nitara Rustogi from Young Elementary. From the middle schools, Arya Sopti at Gregory Middle School is advancing to Nationals. At the high school level, Sanya Kapoor, Ishanvi Vimila, and Alicia Matthew from Matia Valley High School, along with Idant Ranjan and Aruna Nagabushan from Nikwa Valley High School, and Sarah Bunzel from Wabonzi Valley High School are also advancing to Nationals. Congratulations to these students on these outstanding accomplishments.
Let's all give an applause for all of these great accomplishments. Next up is our student representative report by Anna Bucknauer from Wabonzi Valley High School.
Hello, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here again. My name is Anna Bucknauer and I'm here today to represent Wabonzi Valley High School. As a Warrior, I am proud to report that our Wabonzi community continues to thrive and provide many outstanding experiences to our students. Clubs and activities are wrapping up their season, so we thought we'd provide some of our successes. First, Scholastic Bowl was DVC champs, regional champs, and ended up second in a very closely contested championship match. Congratulations to Scholastic Bowl team member Vikram Narasimhan, who competed in the individual players' national competition. He placed 10th of 260 players. Way to go. Also, chess team ended up 7th in state, the highest finishing District 204 school. Next, speech team had their highest number of participants in years. Additionally, this past Wednesday, Wabonzi inducted just over 40 students into Math and Science Honor Society. This was our first year for this program and we look forward to it continuing to grow. Finally, BPA will send 42 students to Nationals in May. In terms of athletics, the winter athletic season has come to a close and ended up being one of the most successful seasons in Wabonzi Valley history. The boys' basketball team ended the season with a 27-3 record and DuPage Valley Conference Champions, along with IHSA Regional Champions. The boys' women dive team finished the season by winning the IHSA sectional for the third straight year and brought home a 3rd place IHSA state trophy. The girls' basketball program completed the most successful season in school history, finishing the season with a 32-5 record. The 32 wins are the most wins in program history. In addition, the girls' basketball program were DuPage Valley Conference Champions, IHSA Regional, Sectional, and Supersectional Champions, and brought home a 4th place IHSA state trophy. What a winter season it has been for the Warriors. Currently, the spring season is up and running and there have been a number of successes on the court, field, track, and in the swimming pool. We look forward to seeing what the spring season brings. Moving on to academics, this Wednesday and Thursday, Wabonzi will test juniors on the SAT and then freshmen and sophomores. This is the first time that the test will be administered digitally. We're looking forward to the new format. On Wednesday, May 8th, we will celebrate our senior awards at the Green and Gold Ceremony at 7:00 PM in the WVHS Auditorium. We'd like to extend an invite to the school board for that night. Overall, Wabonzi Valley High School has had a fantastic year that we will be gathering to celebrate as an entire school on April 24th. We'll be hosting an all-school assembly as a celebration. That's all for the Wabonzi Valley Board Report. Thank you, and as always, go Warriors.
Okay, it is now time for public comment and 60 minutes is allowed. Each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. Although this is not required, it is helpful for the board to know whether the comments and concerns we hear are being raised by residents, so we ask that you state if you live in the district and if you currently have children in our schools. We have four speakers today. The first speaker is Sandy Browning.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, okay. Just let me know when to start. Okay, oh, I can start. Hello, I am the mom of four children who attend District 204. I parent two children with disabilities. All four of my kids will have an IEP or a 504 at syndrome. Unfortunately, we were unable to meet eye-to-eye with her IEP team in order to get the academic rigor that is important for her to have. We don't bring her to school not only for life skills, but we bring her for learning, and we found ourselves in a position where we needed to hire a lawyer. And with the help of two district employees, we were able to get her IEP where it needed to go. We finally found the success. Unfortunately, it was too late. The district did not allow for our daughter to continue and be observed with her academics within a general education classroom. So this fall, she is headed to self-contained in a separate school in a separate classroom without the ability to first see if the academics were okay to begin with before we analyze the behavior. We know that behavior is communication, and so it comes secondary to how is a learner with intellectual disabilities being taught. That is a priority to us as parents. It costs us $5,000, and in order to do due process or mediation, a quote for this district costs a family like us $60,000 to $70,000, which is not a decision where we were going to financially exhaust our family and instead invest that into our children who have special needs. I respect a parent's decision to choose whether they'd like a small classroom for their child or for a parent to be able to choose whether a general education classroom is best suited for a learner with disabilities. Currently in the district, we do not offer that, and special education is not a one-size-fits-all. Not all students with intellectual disabilities fit going into a self-contained classroom. So my proposal, my ambition, is to challenge and see if District 204 can be a catalyst for change where we could pilot maybe five out of our 21 elementary schools to say, we can offer general education classrooms as a core classroom for a student with intellectual disabilities. They can be pulled out for ELA or math or science, but we know that they will be at this elementary school from kindergarten to 5th grade. So this offers a continuum of education for them. Right now, how we're currently structured, if there's not enough students, our kids have to move. If the program closes, our kids have to move. But if we dedicate five schools, guess what? Yes, they're going to be educated away from their peers. Yes, they're going to be, they're not going to go to school with their siblings, but we can offer a school environment where they can at least start-
Ms. Donahue, the speaker's time has ended.
And end in their elementary school. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Yep.
The next speaker, Alyssa Smith.
Hello, my name is Alyssa Smith. I am a graduate of Gregory Middle School and Wabonzi Valley High School. I was a 2nd grade teacher at Georgetown and 3rd grade teacher at Kendall, and I currently live in the Gomber Attendance Area where my niece and nephews attend school. At the September Board Meeting this year, there was a transportation update. That update stated that this school year, both Wabonzi and Nikwa would receive IDOT serious safety evaluations for this school year. Nikwa received their IDOT serious safety evaluation for this year. Wabonzi did not receive an IDOT serious safety evaluation. One reason given for not doing the evaluation was due to the bicycling death by a car of a Wabonzi student this fall. The decision was made to postpone the study due to the grieving of their community and school. Another reason given was that the district was too busy with its other initiatives. The purpose of the IDOT serious safety evaluation, according to the district, is not to remove busing eligibility. The purpose of the IDOT serious safety evaluation is safety. Yes, there are neighborhoods that are less than 1.5 miles to Wabonzi that are currently receiving busing. As a result of the study, these neighborhoods may lose their busing eligibility. But there are also neighborhoods that are less than 1.5 miles to Wabonzi that have multiple hazards on their walk to school. Some of these neighborhoods do not have a sidewalk on their side of Ogden Avenue in order to walk to school. Some of these neighborhoods have to cross both Ogden Avenue and Eola Road. The Georgetown and McCarty neighborhoods have never had an IDOT serious safety hazard evaluation because they are less than 1.5 miles to their school. By not completing the IDOT serious safety hazard evaluation for Wabonzi, we are not considering the safety needs of all students. Also, when did the district make this decision not to complete the evaluation, and when was the public to be informed of the change? This new update was not on any of the board agendas or in any district communication. Because the school and community is grieving, the district did not complete an IDOT serious safety evaluation for that school. Or, because the district was busy with other initiatives, the district did not complete an IDOT serious safety evaluation for a school where a student died crossing an intersection on his bicycle. A school that has walkers that have to cross the busiest and most dangerous walker intersection in the district. This is not focusing on the safety of all students. Aurora Strong Towns Together is advocating for pedestrian and bicyclist safety along our roads. The district and the city of Aurora need to do the same. Thank you.
Next speaker is Gillian Gibson.
Thank you. Most of you know me as a PTA representative for our district. I have a child at Georgetown, a child at Fisher, and a child at Wabonzi. Tonight, I've come to emphasize what Ms. Smith stated from the perspective of a parent whose child suffered the loss of a friend. At my first city council meeting, the older woman said to me that she was a mother first, and that has kind of stuck with me. So, I'm a mother. I'm a mother who was stuck in traffic and didn't know why. I'm a mother who had to read on social media that a 16-year-old student was struck while riding his bike. I'm a mother who had her own 16-year-old, or who had to ask her own 16-year-old son if he had heard anything, only for him to respond with, "I can only think of one person who rides their bike everywhere. Mom, I've got to call Micah." I'm a mother who watched my son call his friends in a panic. I'm a mother who was told sooner than most that her son's friend had passed. I'm a mother who had to walk down the stairs with tears in my eyes and say, "I'm so sorry, baby. It was him." I'm a mother who had to watch my son's heart shatter. I'm a mother who sat and cried with my child as I watched his innocence slip away. I'm a mother whom attended a child's funeral with her son and watched a boy's family try their very best to speak while being so consumed by grief that they could barely get any words out. I'm a mother who watched an entire community grieve. I'm a mother who sat alongside dozens of others wondering how and why. I'm a mother who watched her son help bury his friend. I'm a mother who hugged a mother that just lost her son and could only imagine the pain she was in. I'm a mother who hugged a father that just buried his oldest boy. I'm a mother whose son had to return to school and sit next to an empty desk. I'm a mother whose child is afraid to even drive the minimum speed limit. But I am not a mother who gives up. I am not a mother who allows dangerous things to continue. I am not a mother that will sit quietly and wait for someone else to do something. I'm a mother that will do whatever it takes to prevent another mother from the heartbreak of losing a child or having to sit back and watch her own child's heartbreak. Again, I ask the district, the state, and the city to work together. Thank you.
Last speaker is Melissa.
Good evening. My name's Melissa. I have a daughter who attends Fisher Middle School. My first meeting that I attended at the city was after Micah's death in October. Because it was my first meeting, they assumed that I was with the school district. Everyone asked if I was with the school board, with District 204. They expected someone to show up. No one was there. No one was there. I was there for the entire meeting, at the bike and pedestrian meeting. You were not there. The lack of communication between the school and the city is problematic with regards to the safety of our roads. If you drive down Eola from Ogden Avenue south to Keating, there is not a single crosswalk sign indicating that there are crosswalks that motorists need to be aware of where children are crossing. Aurora had a study done recently on Eola, and the speed limit's 35. The, I'm very nervous. The speed that most drivers traveled was 43 miles per hour, and some of the drivers, they recorded driving 50 miles an hour. That's highway speeds that we have our kids walking along. I invite all of you to walk or bike this area with members from Aurora Strong Towns Together and other community members this Friday, the 12th, at 2:00 PM. I urge you to join us. Driving the area isn't enough. If you're requiring students to walk this stretch of road, the very least you can do, and you should do, is put yourself in their shoes for an afternoon to view it from their perspective, not as a motorist. As stewards of education and guardians of our children's safety, I implore the board to reconsider its decision and reinstate busing eligibility for these communities that have lost it until a comprehensive evaluation of walking conditions is conducted. We owe it to our students to ensure that they have a safe and equitable access to education regardless of what subdivision they live in.
Thank you. We now move to our consent agenda and superintendent report. We will start with the superintendent report, Dr. Tally.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue, members of the Board of Education, Indian Prairie community. Unfortunately, I need to start my comments with sad news with the passing of two of our students. Gabby Coleman, a 1st grader at Gomber, passed away Sunday. Gabby has a brother, Tyreek, at Wabonzi, and a sister, Ava, at Still. Our other student, Adrian Tomkow, a 10th grader at Wabonzi, passed away on March 25th. He has a sister, Karina, who's a senior at Wabonzi. May both families know, we send them our condolences, and I would like for all of us to take a moment of silence to honor these two students. Thank you. I want to remind our community about the annual Team IPF Run or Walk that will take place in October. Registration is now open. I'm looking forward to the Run-Walk and know that many of our schools and staff participate in the program. I remind everyone that IPF supports our students in a myriad of ways to include our robotics program that supports students in the elementary, middle, and high school levels, our Young Hearts for Life program that provides heart screenings for our high school students, and of course, our annual Fine Arts Festival, just to name three programs. IPF has supported our schools for more than 30 years. The goal is to raise $100,000, and that goal is achievable with your help. The most recent NISH ratings are in for our schools. I'm very happy to say that all three of our high schools were found within the top 25 in Illinois. Our district was ranked number 13 of all districts in the state of Illinois. There are only two unit districts ahead of our district, and those districts, Naperville 203 and Barrington, are districts that have the ability to spend on average $4,600 more per pupil than we do. Of the more than 10,000 American school districts reviewed by NISH, Indian Prairie ranked number one of any district with more than 20,000 students. April is Arab American History Month. In this month, we celebrate the Arab American story and the contributions that Arab Americans have made to our country and the world. Our schools, in their own way, are recognizing the role of Arab Americans in our lives. And before I send the meeting back to the board, I would like to request that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Ms. Carol Betzold as principal of Brooks Elementary School effective July 1, 2024, to replace Ms. Terry Russell, who is retiring. Ms. Betzold is currently principal of Crystal Lawns Elementary School in Plainfield, where she has been principal since 2018. Before her current role, she served as an assistant principal and teachers of grades 5 and 3 for a total of 13 years. Ms. Donahue, I'll return the meeting to you.
I need a motion to approve Carol Betzel as principal at Brooks Elementary School.
I move that the Board of Education approve Carol Betzel as principal at Brooks Elementary School as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Gents.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Mr. Carubis.
Yes.
Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
Ms. Demme.
Aye.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
And Ms. Jane.
Yes.
The motion passes. Congratulations. Would you like to introduce your family or your friends that you brought here today?
Yes, so I have my family with me today, my husband John, and my three daughters, Marissa, Sophia, and Alexa, and then my girlfriend Heather Whistler, who is actually a principal with me as well.
Congratulations. Welcome to the district.
I will just say, it's always good when a, one principal brings in another good principal to our district, so that's always a great thing.
Next, we move to our consent agenda. I need a motion for the approval of Consent Agenda Items E through S.
I move that the Board of Education approve Consent Agenda Items E through S as presented.
I second.
Any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
Ms. Gents.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Demme.
Aye.
And Mr. Carubis.
Yes.
The motion passes. Next, we will move to our action items. Approval of high school textbooks and novel adoptions. I need a motion to approve the high school textbooks and accompanying digital resources for use beginning in the 2024-2025 school year as presented.
I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the high school textbooks and accompanying digital resources for use beginning in the 2024-2025 school year as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I've got a question for Mr. Porcell. Just in case. First of all, I came in, looked at the textbooks. Thanks for spending time with me. It's our best practice, I know you mentioned this on your March 11th presentation that you gave us regarding these textbooks, it's our practice to always put those on display. Parents can come and view those and that type of thing, correct?
Yes, sir.
And I know it used to be a law, but I typically try to do it for close to 30 days or so. Did you have anybody come in and look at the materials?
Just you, Mr. Rising.
Okay, all right. I wasn't saying that for kudos, but I was just curious if people did, because I think it's important. I think, you know, we had curriculum teams, department chairs, people across the district, you know, pick those materials out, and it's our responsibility as a board to make sure that we pass those curriculum materials. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we did present the materials, what, at our last meeting, was it?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so you can see the rigor that went into selecting those choices. So, all right. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Gents.
Yes.
Mr. Carubis.
Yes.
Ms. Demme. Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
And Ms. Jane.
Yes.
The motion passes. We will now have a presentation from Mr. Rodney Mack regarding the Technology Services Update.
Good evening. Thank you, board members. Dr. Tally, again, this is our kind of mid-year update. We usually do our big project update, usually in the fall. This is kind of just, you know, recapping or some small projects that we've had throughout the year. As you'll notice, I'm alone. Brian and BJ are at the national conference right now. I think they picked, found a conference to be at during this board meeting. Not throwing them under the bus, but I'm going to. We just have three small updates. One of them is something that was approved at the last board meeting, which is the Rival 5 Phone and Security Solution. Thanks for approving that. This is a new phone system. We normally, in our long-term plan, did not have phone upgrade until the following year in our plan. Working with Matt and Ron Wilkie and their department, they were looking at more notification systems, security notification. We ended up finding a solution that a few of us were aware of and had seen at a conference that actually kind of integrated both the phone and the security solution together. So, you approved the Rival 5 phone solution. I just kind of want to go over a little bit some of the enhancements of the solution, and then some of the- and then some of the cost benefits of moving at this time. One of the nice things is, this new solution will put a phone in every classroom. We currently do have phones in every room. Middle and high schools, a lot of their phones are more of a closed phone system. They don't dial, they can't call out. They can call to the main office and report something. This new solution actually will put a phone in every single place where there are individuals. It also has 24-hour monitoring for all the devices. That's a benefit. Right now, our phones are, just like phones a long time ago, you plug them in and they'll work if you pick them up and get a dial tone. They don't actually report out if something's not connected. But this is part of a security solution now as well. We need to make sure that those that are connected are working. So, the company, Rival Five, actually monitors all of our solutions and that it will know there's, you know, let's just use simple numbers, 2,700 phones out there. Every morning, 2,700 phones should be reporting in. If not, they just come out, they don't wait for us to call them, they will repair those phones to make sure that, again, it's not just a phone now, it's a part of a notification solution. One nice benefit of this phone solution piece is the soft phone access. Again, during the pandemic, it was very hard, a lot of times, for teachers to be at home and have to call out and have to mask their phone number. And how many times you forget *67, whatever those numbers are to mask your ID? This new soft phone solution, actually you can put an app on their cell phone or on laptop, and it'll look like they are calling from their classroom phone, so that, again, no matter where they're at, they can use that solution. This does include RFAX, which is their e-faxing solution. We spend quite a bit on e-faxing, or fax machines as it is now. Yes, believe it or not, people still use fax machines. Seems like education and medical are the only two places that still do, but for some reason, we do.
Legal's pretty bad, too.
So, but this is a big solution, because, a big savings, because again, right now, faxing actually can't go over internet lines without adapters and a whole bunch of other things, so they all require old phone lines, and we pay for each one of those phone lines. So, this will also integrate an e-fax solution, which we're actually going to start rolling out here this spring. The service also has survivability with LTE backup. Last summer, if everyone remembers, when the dump truck knocked over a bunch of cables and the internet went out, our phones go out. This new solution actually has at every single building location an LTE backup. That backup is not meant for, like, normal 50 calls, but it does allow for outside calls. It allows for, you know, limited incoming calls, but it allows that survivability in case a building ever loses its connection or power. There is the E911, which we have in our current solution, but again, that will include location ID for every single classroom. So, someone makes a phone call out to 911, the responding PSAP, Aurora, Naperville, whomever, actually can identify.
All right, I need a motion to reconvene the meeting.
I move that we reconvene the meeting.
I second.
Michelle, will you call the roll?
Ms. Gents?
Yes.
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
Mr. Carubus?
I'm just marveling. Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Demming? And Ms. Fosdick?
Yes.
Motion passes. We are back in session, so back to you.
Thank you.
Sorry for the delay.
I'll start back at the top, so I don't remember if I, oh, I did hit the one-button activation again. The new solution, this security solution, when activated, you, person hits a button on the phone, they're programmable buttons, and it asks for a confirmation. Are you sure you want to activate the notification solution? When that happens, it is integrated with the overhead paging, so our current solution, the speakers in the buildings, will automatically, the announcement will go over those. It'll also come out of every location that has a phone as well, so you'll hear two different ones. Some of this, we can add additional sound-sensing speakers or strobes. The sound-sensing speakers, if you're in a multipurpose room, a lot of times, we've heard that sometimes an announcement goes off, and if it's very loud during lunch hour, people can't hear it because the sound does not adjust. These sound-sensing speakers will make sure that these notifications are heard. If it's a loud room, it'll play it louder. If it's a quiet room, it'll actually play it at a decibel level that's not going to, you know, scare people off. There is a direct PSAP notification with this, which means directly to 911 once it is activated, within usually about 10 seconds of every demo we saw. Most notification and alarm security systems, as you know, if you have AT&amp;T or anything home, it goes to a call center. That call center, then, is the person who actually calls 911, so there's always that delay. Mr. Wilkie and our team will work closely with the law enforcement as this procedure is put in place, to what does that look like, so that they're aware when that thing is activated, it's probably been activated, what does their response look like? They, the notification is they can actually start sending people to the site, and then someone else calls in response and gives them more information, but at least it'll eliminate, it'll eliminate some of that lag time for calls. There's also, again, audible and visual notifications, so we do get a few IB strobe, or IP strobe lights or sound-sensing speakers. We can place those, we can add them as needed. So again, if you have some special ed rooms where the notification is too loud, we can put some strobe lights. You can change the frequency, how fast, the color, everything, so that it doesn't, you know, mis-trigger people. It's a nice expandable solution, that again, all we need to do is run a network cable to that location, and we can add them as we go. If, in the case of an older building and an intercom speaker goes out, you don't have to replace the entire system, you can just add another speaker into that room quickly without having to integrate or change out the old analog sound system. There is also security and access integration. We do not have that capability yet, but with some of our door strikes and things like that, as I know part of the master facility plan, where if they were to have all the, you know, main doors on our strike was wired and network-wise, you could actually lock all the doors automatically. You can do a whole bunch of other integration-type things. So it is nice that it's expandable as we move through this master facility plan as well. Finances of the system, currently, we use, it's about $420,000 a year just for our current phone system. Other replacement costs that come about every six to eight years, and we've done a few of those, and I kind of put down, main voice routers are due in the next two, school voice routers, right now, are 12 years old. We look at this as a 10-year cost of ownership. This, the current phone system is just a phone solution. There's no security or anything else added to it. So the difference there is about $650,000 over a 10-year period, or $65,000 a year. One nice solution with this is our new E-Rate, part of our budget in our telecom bill. We currently pay about $480,000 a year of our telecom, goes to internet and our wide-area connection, or connection for all of our buildings to stay networked. Part of E-Rate in Illinois' Department of Instructional Technology is taking over those bills. Other districts joined a few years ago, us because they were under a five-year contract, we had to wait for our contract was up. So, moving forward, we're actually going to see a great savings. Our current internet and WAN bill is around 480. Next year, it's going to be about $120,000 moving forward. We still have to pay for a secondary internet line. E-Rate will not cover backup internet or split internet. And it'll, there's also five other sites that won't qualify for this new contract. So, that $65,000 increase that we're going to see to truly add the, you know, the security and solution piece and all of the benefits of this phone solution will fall in nicely with money offloading in another, in another area. So, part of that is, I'll talk about when I get to the budget part here at the end as well, but I just wanted to show you what a total cost of ownership is. Right now, other than, I think we pay, we counted once, it was 11 different bills, we pay a year for our phone solution. Next year, we pay one. One place, one night, it is, you know, inefficiencies, it might be a little bit more, but again, that phone solution is also adding that R-Lock feature and that security solution piece with it. One update I wanted to give was, we have our first real analytics, looking at the first six months of a process we started about two years ago with the copiers and the printers. Again, as we originally replaced all the copiers and started the consolidation of print machines, if you remember, there was 1,300 or so, I think, print devices at the very beginning onset of this. We are slowly but surely continuing to do that. I think last month, we approved some more copiers that were going in place. Every about small copier that we bring in reduces about five or six printers, which as you can see up in that top right, reduce energy. Just from the 208 printers that went down is about 5,200 a month. Anyone who pays an energy bill will say, we didn't see that 5,200 a month. That's because the energy costs are also going up, but it, you're not always going to see that cost, but those are about what it costs to run printers. They don't have, like, real true sleep modes. You can also then see the copier totals coming in now. Again, it used to be 33 copiers in the district, there's now 125. We've added functionality and use across multiple areas, from high school teaching office areas have copiers now, where before, they would always have to go down to the center, so we've really tried to give the staff more flexibility, but also try to find savings associated with this. Just in the first six months, you'll see our total usage is a little, around 11 million, so that's a six-month use. The old copier contract, the year previous to my getting here, was paid for for 30 million copies, so that was for the whole year. Again, at half a year, we're only at 11 million. Part of that is these unreleased jobs and duplex printing, the way that we are saving information, or saving, I guess, trees, I'm reading the word trees here. That we are doing savings is, as a former librarian who used to also work in a high school library, there was four computer stations, and every day, at the end of the day, you'd walk up, and there was a ream of paper on the printers that no one ever picked up. I don't know how. It's five feet away from them. They hit print, but they walk away. Just that alone, we're seeing 14,000, just in six months, of people just not printing what they don't need. They hit print, but they never go pick it up. We're also forcing duplex printing. That is the default. Anyone can switch that to a one-sided, but people don't realize sometimes, "Oh, duplex worked fine for what I needed." It does drastic savings. Again, there, you can see just in the first six months, 35,000 almost savings compared to what we did the years previous at the same time period. One other big thing that we switched last year, and this is the first six months, we actually see the effects of bringing the copy center in-house back. The last time, we had a full year to look at it, from '21 to '22, July to December, there was about 4,100 jobs done with the Naperville shared, where we had that, the 95th Street Center. Our bill for that was 177,000. That same timeframe, this year, we only sent them 415 jobs. Some of those are the big jobs. It's not... It's not... Some of the small packets that get sent, it is the big student planners and things like that, which are, you know, multiple-thousand-dollar jobs. But again, we're able to bring in 2,400 of them to do in-house. That savings alone is about 55,000, just in the first six months. The other... Someone might go, "Well, where's the other, about, you know, 1,400 jobs?" Part of this is rights and rules, where they're printing them now in the building as well, at that small discounter where we pay four cents, four tenths of a cent for every print. Again, the old solution that had been in place for 20 years, I mean, there were times where people would send a packet like this, and they only needed four of them. And they would send it off to the print center, which was fuel and economy and everything else to get, you know, 20 sheets of paper back. They're doing that now in-house. So, we're hoping to see much larger benefits. Again, if you take that 55, and the second half of the year, we're looking at 110. The paper cut saved 35,000. If the energy is accurate, and 60,000, it could be around 200,000. That does not include any of the overhead costs that actually Matt's department was responsible for, which was the lease on the copiers that were at that center and everything else. So, we continue, as you saw, I think it was last, not last board meeting, but the one before, where you approved some larger copiers, but we also added one big binding machine to one of the centers, again, trying to bring more of those 415 jobs in-house. We are seeing a benefit to this whole solution of the money that we've invested in it. We're starting to see that back, so. The last part, I was just going to go over quickly, a technology budget overview. This is kind of seed planted by Board Member Carubus, when he kind of said he kind of wants to see the whole picture. And I thought, this fall, we really did, my... The directors and myself, we really sat down and really looked at a long-term budget solution. Presented that to Matt this year. It goes out to the year 2031. Really looking at, if you remember, the old, the other with the gray and the highlighted yellow of the things that we need to replace. So, that kind of started the foundation for this. I went out and looked, and most government industries are between 3% and 4% of their technology budget. That would put us between 12.5 and 17.2. The budget since I've been here hovers around 10 million. But on top of that, every year, Matt's been able to use capital funds. That paid for the copy replacement and consolidation plan, the elementary smartboards, which was a large chunk, the network switches that we did with E-Rate and the wireless access points. All in all, that was about 11 million. Add that up, we are in between that 12.5 and 17.2 plan. The problem is, is they're not part of that long-term plan. Every year, it seems to be that extra ask, or if there's capital there. So, we sat down, wrote out every renewal we would have, refresh we would do, changed some of the way that we do our renewals, and sat down, and we're able to give Matt and say, "Here's where we know we're going to be all the way out to 2030 for all major systems," without having to go back and saying, "What do you have left in capital? What do you have left that we need?" That still puts us in that... It comes out to about an average of about 11.5 million per year. That still puts us under that 12.5, and I... It is funny that you look at it, but it's... Part of it is not everything that would be constituted as a technology budget comes out of technology. Curriculum and instruction page for quite a bit of the subscription services and things like that. Curriculum... Some districts, it all comes out of one budget, and others, it's not... All in all, we're falling right where we should be. It's just trying to get it so that it's not always that extra ask, or we're waiting to find out, I don't want to say what's left over, but what's left over. It really is kind of one of those things. Having given Matt already that thing, he's not here to protect himself either. He's already told me I'm a million short next year already. But again, knowing that, and us knowing and having our long-term plan, we can look at that and go, "Okay, we see where we can manipulate, where we can make some cuts or push something off an extra year." Again, moving the phones up ahead to a year of the one, you know, kind of helps us in some places. But it is good that we have that plan, because it really does, it allows Matt to see when a big spike is going to happen. I think the largest is the 14 million. That's in like 2028, when smartboards are going to need to be done again. We know when that's going to happen. The other stuff, we're kind of really staging as it goes through. But then, looking at each budget breakdown individually, I think this kind of gets to literally, where does the dollars go? And this is, again, based on the average, looking forward to 2030, and again, this is about 11.5. That's why I kind of left it as percentages, because every year, it kind of fluctuates just a little bit. But you can see a large portion of what we spend on every year is equipment. The next part is the software and services, and that's our licensing, that's the keeping the lights on type of thing. I'll go in in just a second. Then the third largest portion is that telecom, which again, we should see a small decrease in that with the 300,000 about savings in the next few years, as that, the Illinois Do-It group is taking over those E-Rate bills. Looking at software and professional services, just again, to see, we did a big cyber. You can see that we're spending about 30% of that total fund on cybersecurity still. That's about 800,000. This, about 1 million just to keep the lights on. That's paying Microsoft every year. That's paying Google. That's paying our backup solutions, all of those things that we need to keep everything up and running. The printer copiers, 14%. That's actually the clicks. That's what we pay for every sheet that comes off. Doesn't include the paper, just what we bill for Flex Print that is all, everything that comes off the copiers and the printers. Those are our big pieces. And then again, our CIS seems to be a big chunk. This whole part is about 2.4 million, not the CIS part, the professional services. That's the kind of subscriptions, everything that we need to run. Then our equipment, this is probably where we see the add from what's currently there right now. I would say that blue area, the network hardware, was the part that was always that extra ask. Again, being in the budget, that's about that 16% or 1.2 million, which is the difference between, you know, about 11 and a half and the 10 million we've been getting. Our student devices are... One of the ways that we've streamlined our student devices is moving forward, starting this year, we are doing, this first year, we're doing second grade, third grade, sixth and ninth. And then, moving forward, it is just second, sixth, and ninth. Every student will get it. They keep it while they're in the building for that time period. We're hoping that reduces the repair and replacement, as every student gets, every freshman gets, "This is yours until you graduate." You know, sometimes it was, last year, the high schools got new ones. Well, the seniors were like, "I got the brand-new one. I don't care about it after this year." Not that that happens, but this is a little bit more of an ownership that we can work with the parents, with the schools, and kind of say, "This is your second grader. It's yours until you're in fifth. Sixth grade, you need to keep this until eighth grade," to where they're not changing hands at some point. It also allows us to find a constant number. Again, when we replace at the high schools or the elementaries compared to the middle school, those are the years that we would see spikes in our budget. So, trying to standardize it and changing the way we do it. Staff devices end up being about 20% each year, labs and offices. Classroom display is our... That's where our smartboards and things that we're looking at, the middles and high school. You'll see, a big part is our repair replacement. And that's not people breaking things. That's just the age of some equipment dying down. But that is, on average, about where our money goes each year across the technology funding. Again, this, looking all the way out to 2030, this, you know, again, at that about 11.5 range, on average, with a few peak years, we should be able to get to the point where we're not always going. Can we do smartboards this year? Can we do whatever it is next? You know, we didn't have to do the, all the switches at one time. Our plan now is to start the high school switches in two years, and then the year after middle, then elementary, so that we're kind of chunking it all together and making it, you know, more palatable than having really huge spikes in needed funds. And then there's our strategic plan focus. And any questions?
All right. I'm just going to open it up to the board members for any questions or comments.
I just have one quick question. When would the RIVAL 5 system be installed if it's approved? How long is that process to get that in the building?
They're working on it now. It'll be, we're switching over in July.
Okay.
So, yeah, they're actually moving into one of our rooms, because they're going to be working out of our facility that entire summer, as they prepare and get this thing ready. Hard part's going to be just following some of the flooring to put the phones in place. But it will be a switch-over. There will be communication going out to the entire community. Because when you port the numbers from AT&amp;T or Comcast to us, there is that little bit of lag where you can't move over 2,000 phone numbers right away. You know, it's not like it's... I mean, we all know, you remove your own cellphone. I mean, it seems like it takes nine hours just to do one cellphone, try to do a couple thousand lines. It'll take a few days, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Comment and a request. So, first of all, thanks for, thanks Rod for explaining the budget, especially on the RIVAL 5. Kudos, because this system just seems, it's not even a comparison. It's comparing apples to oranges of where we've been, and the fact that we're only at 600,000 over a course of 10 years, and then it'll essentially be made up in a few years with the savings on the E-Rate. That's awesome. The other thing I just wanted to give you kudos on is balancing everything that your department does, and I know you have a small department for the size of our district. It's pretty incredible, because the fact that, in balancing all of this, whether it's security, software, hardware, you know, the copiers, the phones, the fact that we weren't a school district that was cyber-attacked, when 80, when, well, it's, I mean, but seriously, 80% of districts, and we always stayed ahead of it. You were always on top of it. You guys were, you know, got all the systems we talked about last year in place, and it's still happening to school districts. 80% of them are getting cyber-attacked. So, well done protecting our students, our staff, everybody else. One request I will make, the print center, I might be still in Katie's thunder here. The print center, I know you know this, but our, I know our staffs understand it for the most part, but our PTAs and our parent groups that are in the schools, it's very confusing to them, and it seems like the understanding is different from building to building. And that might be because maybe the buildings don't necessarily have a full grasp on how they can have the parent organizations and the PTAs work with it. So, just a request, I know you know that. I know you've heard that from them, but now that we're kind of streamlining a lot of this, that's just a request I have.
Yeah, no, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks, Rod. I like where this is going, as far as, you know, the presentation, especially on the budget side. What I hear you're saying, obviously, from a 30,000-foot view, is, you know, we're paying more in some areas, but we're getting more expanded service, and we're updating stuff. But there's also cost savings in other areas, too. So, I appreciate that, is we're not just, you know, buying the newest and greatest and paying a premium for it. We're also looking for areas where we can cost-save. So, that's fabulous. This is really a request for Matt Shipley, who's unfortunately didn't join you tonight. But I love the fact that we have this budget presentation, but we also don't do this kind of budget for other areas. We do our budget on a different level, more of the state reporting level. So, I think we need to figure out a way to integrate this budget with that budget, so that they make sense. And either there's a, you know, some slide or link. So, when we approve the budget, we can see that certain parts go into technology, and technology's doing X, Y, and Z. So, that's my request for Matt Shipley when we do this, because technically, we're never approving the technology budget. If we just roll it in, we're not seeing that pullout on the larger budget. So, that'd be my request to try to figure out a way to make that presentation. Thanks.
Let me just, let me just clarify from my... It sounds as if you're asking what I'm used to, which would be a budget book, which every department is. You have the overall budget, and then within it, you have the individual departments. So, for example, you would have IT, you would have special education, you would have curriculum. All of those would then feed into that overall budget. Is probably what you're asking.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't asking that. I was just asking for technology, but we can go, you know, we can go to that area. I mean, I think, you know, at some point, we need to get a little bit more granularity in our budget. So, if my ask is, you know, spurs other areas that are more conducive, I agree. I'm not familiar with budget books.
I'll share them with you.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you.
You will find it is quite extensive.
All right, there's a summary, or...
Nope, 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 no, no. No, no, you've already put it there, so I'm just letting you know. Nice 300-page document. We'll let you see, because you're dealing with it.
Don't, don't print it.
I think that gets closer to many, to how many corporations work, not necessarily the written verbal portion on that, but oftentimes, departments feed up into what your corporate budget looks like. Slide eight. I just had a couple of comments on the, you know, sharing with us that usually what the average would be anticipated for us would be, you know, 12 to 17.2, and we've hovered around 10, much like facilities, where one of my coworkers often has, you know, reminded us where we stand on that. Just the fact that we've continued to try and be as up-to-date as possible with expenditures that are not where they've needed to be. So, seeing this presentation and the suggestion is extremely critical for me, just from so much of a safety standpoint, to see what, you know, we're going to be able to bring to our schools. And kudos for finding an opportunity for us to do that, and in a way that ultimately, we will see some savings. And I love how you did on slide seven, showing that that breakdown is already, member Carubus has alluded to. And there was one other thing. Hold on for me. That, oh, I know what I had a question on. So, as we get ready to do this implementation, and as our staff comes back, or the majority of the staff that's, you know, nine, 10 months, are they, are there going to be training that's necessary for this?
Yes, yeah, yeah. It'll go along with the safety and security group. Again, every, because the safety piece of all of that will, they're going to, will be able to activate and actually run it, so they can actually hear what it sounds like, too. It's not just going to be, "This is what's going to happen, and this is how you activate the button." With the current one, with the overhead speakers, we asked everybody to try that, and you, some schools in the morning, teachers were trying it. This is an automated system. It's very, you know, those in the security group were able to see it, but we will be able to work with that. We notify the PSAPs when we do it, and then the whole school can go through and actually hear what it sounds like, see what the notification is. Again, we've got to work on procedures and all of those. There's still those aspects once it's all set up. But yes, they'll, everyone will go through it and be able to see it. And it really is, I mean, I'm not, I don't want to say everything's simple. It's not an easy button, but it's this, and the screen says, "Do you want to activate?" And they just say, "Yes." And that's priority one. You know, the procedures afterwards is, you know, for a principal to call, or whoever's in charge of the building at that time, to call the PSAP with more information. But it's, it's a lot. When you see the demo, it's a lot with all flashing lights and everything, but we'll be doing that at every building.
And I'm sorry, I may have missed this, just not, like, when is the expected implementation, complete implementation timeframe?
The phone system will switch over this July.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just, just a comment that, slide six, I appreciate not just the cost benefits, but from a sustainability perspective. I think that is something that we've all been thinking about, and I just appreciate the attention to that. And one more question with regard to the printing system that you have set up. Have you, have you received any feedback for drawbacks from it, aside from maybe PTA programs not being able to access it or know how to access it?
I mean, at the last PT, at the, I don't remember what the name of the group was now that I was at.
IPPC.
IPPC meeting. A couple had spoken of it. What was nice, being there, too, is that Josie, who is our print manager, was spoken of, just reached out to her. IPPC meeting, a couple had spoken of it, what was nice being there too is that Josie, who is our print manager, was, was spoken of, just reached out to her, and again, I think it is like Mark said, it's, it's a little bit, some buildings might have been trained a little differently as to how they allowed that to roll out, but we'll re, we'll re-hit that with them. The other feedback we got a little bit was, there was a little bit of a switch over from in the old system that was with the, the shared group, is their files kinda sat on, and all they had to do is say reorder it, reorder it, so they had to, there was a, there was a work process to get everything up into the new system. But after that, I mean, we've heard very little, the most I hear is from people I know personally, like, they just don't like walking as far, and I'm like, oh. Part of the health plan, I guess.
Wellness.
Right.
That's it, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate, and you heard the comments from the board on how important the focus is on security and also the savings, like the E-rate changes that you're pursuing, and the copy center strategy are all things that help us financially, yeah, the phone system's a little bit more increased, but it does come with a lot of other things that we need, so that's great. I also appreciate your thoughtfulness about the Chromebook strategy, I do think it does make a difference when you give a student a Chromebook and say, "This is yours", you know, second grade to fifth or whatever, that they will likely treat it more as some, a possession that's valued, rather than something they can turn in at the end of the year. So I think that that is a creative change that I think will serve our community well. So, thank you very much, and thank you for all your work in this area.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have a presentation from Dr. Mike Purcell and Ms. Barbie Chisholm regarding middle and high school course revisions.
Good evening, Dr. Tally, Board of Education, Dr. Chisholm and I are excited to come and share some things with you regarding some work that our teams have been doing, both individually and in collaboration, and wanted to share those with you, first of all, I want to thank Ms. Carter and Dr. Tally for wearing, supporting my Purdue Boilermakers by wearing black and gold tonight. Game starts in nine minutes, so let's go. The, you thought I talked fast last time, Justin. We are excited to come and share with you three courses tonight that we've been working very hard on, as we've done in the past, this is tied to two pieces of board policy, one is curriculum development, Board Policy 640, and we'll also be talking about some resources for some of this work, which is Board Policy 6210. These are both tied to strategic plan priority number one, really looking at the high-quality curriculum, and what you'll hear about is how this, we really wanna look at curriculum instruction to meet and exceed standards, and, and to drive growth for our students on both in the classroom and on standardized assessments, so. Those are things that we're gonna talk about in each of these presentations. The first, the three that we'll talk about tonight are Advanced Placement Psychology, and then two classes that we teach at both the middle school and the high school, which are French one and Algebra one, that we've got a chance to work on together, which was a real professional treat, so we'll be able to share those with you as well. To kinda ground our work, this is a slide that you've seen before, but just helps us to kinda get in the mindset of, of the work that we're doing. These are, the courses that we prioritize are part of the five-year plan that Dr. Lee came and shared with you in January, right? And those courses are prioritized by our team in collaboration with the department chairs and assistant principals for curriculum instruction, Dr. Howard, Dr. Lee, and the, and the, and the high school principals, and, and the middle school teams for the work that we're doing tonight. All of the work that we are, will present to you are aligned to the priorities that are described there. Most of these classes are very tied to state standards and mandates. The Advanced Placement class is tied to the College Board standards, right, so a big part of this work is alignment between schools, you hear about, you know, we came to talk to you about Spanish last year, we talked about the challenges of bringing 10 different schools on, on board of the same thing, you'll hear about the same things tonight with French and Algebra. Obviously student achievement outcomes, and then alignment to our board goals, our strategic plan, and our equity plan. Bringing all of those things together requires, you know, we just sort of paved the ground, and then we just got really smart people in the room who really know what they're doing, and they're great educators, and they really help us to put all this together. So we're really, really here representing them and the work that they've done over the past several months. This is a slide that Dr. Lee put together that, that we really, our team really likes. Like I said, it's a nice graphic to kinda talk about the process, the circular process of this. So we really do a needs assessment, what are the things that need most updating, most, are most in need, and we'll talk about that a little bit more with the psychology presentation in a moment. And spend some time designing and developing, look towards implementation and review, right, so we talk, we'll talk about professional learning as part of the process, making sure that we're partnering with these vendors if, for the resource that we do adopt eventually, and then making sure that our teachers have the right tools in front of them to, to help kids. The first one that we're here to discuss tonight is Advanced Placement Psychology, this is one of our most popular Advanced Placement classes. It is one that we have really targeted students for, a priority that we, I've talked about here at the board is we all always wanna make sure that we can meet the needs of our really high-achieving students, that's a priority for us. But a passion of mine that you've heard from me before is we wanna find for all, as many kids as possible, find an opportunity for kids to take a college-level class where they're still with us, just to kinda do it in the comfort of the place that they know that they can succeed with educators they're familiar with, this is one of those classes. Advanced Placement Psychology is, is going back to our partnership with Equal Opportunity Schools that you'd heard of years ago, was one of the classes we really looked at as a, it doesn't have, it require, it's a challenging course, it is college-level, it takes a lot of work. Doesn't require as much background knowledge as some other classes that we have, so it's an entry point into college-level work, and several hundred thousand of our kids each year take this class. So that all is background to tell you, the College Board also did not do us a ton of favors this year. They did, dropped a revision to this course on March 1st, and it was rather significant. So, so we worked with the social department chairs and the APs and the teachers, and really said, "What do we need to do?", cause this is a a very important course for us. And really worked in, and, and why I mention this in the context of Dr. Lee's presentation is what we had done was to create some flexibility in that plan, and it was something I've talked about with you before, is that it's great to have a plan, but you also need to be able to pivot from that plan when it's, when it's needed, this is one of those times. So we had put some work on the back burner with US history, we had planned to do that this year, we're gonna push that back a year. We kinda reallocated that work in that time, in those finances, to Advanced Placement Psychology. Essentially flip-flopped them in terms of the sequence of where they go, right, just in full transparency, in case you were, happened to be looking at the five-year plan, as we were talking, wanted to just kinda talk to you about the decision-making that went into that, and why we did that work, okay? The reason is, two, one, this was a very latecoming change, and we were, we knew there would be an update, typically updates are more marginal than significant, this was more significant. It is a class where we have a high number of students enroll, and a very high number of students for whom this may be their only AP class. So it was important for us to get the most up-to-date resources in front of our teachers and our kids as soon as possible. Another piece of this is they're actually, the, the tenor of the class has changed a little bit, it's a little more sciency than social sciency. It's been in the past a little more research, but the research of psychology, right, psychology is a complex topic, right, so you can look at it a couple different ways. So it has a very researched sort of thread that runs through it, affects some of the, the, one of the more significant changes is in the assessment itself, where there are a bigger focus on, on what they call article analysis, so really looking at peer-reviewed articles, kinda pulling them apart, and then doing some analysis of that, and then drawing some conclusions, so. So a different questioning style too, so we wanted to make sure that we got some resources in our teachers' hands that would allow them to do, to instruct kids about the, the questioning itself, okay? So all of that, we have, did a lot of work over the last six weeks, both here on the kind of logistics and budget side, but also the first thing was with our teachers and our department chairs to make sure that we were doing the right work and putting the right tools in their hands. Very much a unanimous review of the resources that are available out there. This is actually the book that we use now, it is, it is the gold standard in psychology. We want to kinda look at the new edition, who they, the publishers had, had some previews, so they had some time to get ahead of this a little bit, which is, at the end of this, nice for us. And we, what we wanna do is to make sure that our kids have the textbooks they need, and, and a digital license that would go along with that. This is the same publisher, this is a new edition of that same book that had, that highlights all the things that I just spoke to you about. The changes in the course and exam descriptions, the CDs, and the different questioning styles, and putting some tools in our teachers' hands to help them to achieve in the way that they have in the past. So that's a, an exciting new, kinda high-speed change for us, but we're very excited to, to bring that to you tonight. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Chisholm to talk you through the next call.
Great, thank you, I'm gonna start with French one, so French one at the high school and at middle school, it is split over two grades, so seventh grade and eighth grade take the same course but split over two years. This isn't a change in practice, but our work this year was really about making sure that we were in really nice alignment, especially with the shifts that we're making to providing transcripted high school credit for our seventh graders taking world language next year. So we, the team, our first step is with, work with the team to make sure that we're in alignment with our curriculum priorities. Again, this alignment is not new, but with the, the shifts with the credit change, it just makes it even more important than ever. So our team developed these units, and they are based on the AP themes to help create that vertical alignment and make sure that our students are, are really getting set up for success is if they continue into world languages throughout their high school career. So these are. The team was very, we had middle school, high school, we had department chairs in there, and it was a great team to work with, they were unanimous in identifying a recommended resource, Dacore, and that is published by Vista. Some of the things that our team was most excited about is there were some really great digital resources that provided that additional practice and individualized feedback that is really important for language learning, especially at those initial levels. So they were really excited about a lot of those little pieces that were involved in there, along with your standard, you know, digital textbook, but it had some really unique pieces. The other piece that our teams were really excited about were the cultural representations of diverse French communities around the world. And so, you know, we're trying to develop that equity consciousness in our students, and making sure that, you know, within the study of world languages, we're helping really foster that understanding of, of diversity within the language. I'll also talk to you about Algebra, Algebra One as it's known at the high school, and we just call it Algebra in middle school, but it's, it is the same course, and it fits into different pathways depending on when students enter the course. So you can see we have some students here at the middle school, if they are in PA math, they will take Algebra at seventh grade, or if they're in accelerated math, they take it in eighth grade, and then we have students that take it for the first time in Algebra, or, sorry, in their freshman year, and then we do have some sophomores also take this course, so. Our students are different depending on when they enter the course. None of this is a change from our previous practice, but it just kinda helps build, it, it is, it is important that we are all, that our teachers are all on the same page with, with what Algebra is and what it looks like, but then we also have that ability to make sure that our course meets the needs of the unique groups of students that our educators are working with.
These charts are not new, we just put them in here to, to, for the context for you guys, cause this is something that, just to illustrate, this is something we're teaching at multiple grade levels, just so, so you see where it fits in the, in the scope of all the work that we're doing.
So the team revised some of our units, the units themselves are not changed, Algebra hasn't really changed all that much, but they did some work in terms of re-sequencing and trying to make sure that they, they fit in places that make sense in terms of pacing. And then a big piece of this was really going back to tightening up our scope and sequence. I think, you know, we, at one point, were a little bit tighter, and then during the COVID remote learning period, we started to kinda, our sites developed a little bit more autonomy, and this was really important for us to get back on the same page, just to make sure we have a common understanding of what is taught and, and when. So the team did identify a resource that really was aligned to our scope and sequence content goals. To be, usually when our teams get to this point, we look at our resources, they're like, "Oh, we would have to move this piece or this piece", they looked at it and they said, "No, this is exactly how we wanted to teach it", and so that's always a bonus. And then they also really liked the Envision resource as it supports the standards of mathematical practices, which is really those math-thinking pieces that, you know, look a little bit different than, than the traditional straightforward math instruction, but it's really challenging our students to think like mathematicians and go beyond just that rote learning process. Envision also had a very robust digital platform, and that's one of the reasons is not, is, is thinking we can leverage that and not necessarily need individual books for every single student. You know, our students get weighed down if we, we give them too many books, and so, you know, they, they felt really strongly that the, the digital platform for individual students would be a great resource for them to have alongside physical books within the classroom when needed.
And this course, like all of them, we would have books for any student for whom they had a plan, they had to take a book home with them, or any student, frankly, that requested, just I, "I would learn better, if, if I could have a book home with mom, and us looking on the same computer screen, it doesn't work for us", that there'll be books available to all of them on demand, so, but the, the teachers really felt good about having that classroom resource, as a classroom resource, rather than having to have kids kinda bring them back and forth all the time, they knew that doing that math on the Chromebook or through, you know, paper things that they could publish would be perfectly appropriate. Our next steps would be to come back at the next Board of Education meeting on May 6th to, we have two pieces, you know, one is the curriculum, these really are curriculum changes in French or Algebra, so we won't be bringing anything, but the AP Psychology is a new course, we wanna make sure you're aware of those changes, and ask you to approve that course the next time you meet, and also be asking for approval of the three resources that we shared with you this evening. Envision for the Algebra class, Dacore, for the Myers Psychology for AP, for our AP Psychology class. So as you know, we put a big value on professional learning that comes behind that, it's a little bit of why we try to get these in as early as we can, so we can get, get these vendors even in front of our teachers, either virtually or in person before the school year lets out. So that was a big push for us, particularly with Algebra, we have so many different teachers doing that in so many different places. To be able to do that, and do it when the teachers are here, was, is a big deal for us, so. One of the reasons we wanted to make sure we got here tonight, so, we, we thank you for, for the time and, and attention to this, these are some really big things for us, and we're really excited, would be happy to answer any questions that you might have now.
Okay, I'm gonna, again, just open it up in the interest of time, because I do want you to get to your game. So, does anyone have any comments or questions about the changes to, recommended changes for curriculum?
I have a question and a request. Question is, can you go to slide 12? What I, I just wanna reiterate what I think I heard you say. With these units now, you know, I know everything is driven by state standards, right, so how Algebra One looks aligns to the state standards of what the students have to learn for Algebra One. But I also understand over time, when a district has had a curriculum for a while, that can look a little slightly different, right, they put, you know, I mean, a lot of things you have to kinda follow the, maybe bad example with Algebra One, cause a lot of stuff kind of flows, you have to learn one thing before you learn the next thing. Order of Operations, but what I'm hearing you say now is that with this new curriculum, we should be aligned at all three high schools of how they're gonna go through these units, so if a student at Labanze or Matilla were to go, I mean, it might not So if a student at Wabansy or Matilla were to go, I mean, it might not line up week to week or day to day, but it should be pretty close where if one student went from one high school to another high school, they're probably going to chances are pretty pretty closer to that same unit. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yeah, even past that, all all 10 of our schools. So, yeah, all all seven middle schools and all three high schools are. So there there was a little bit of what you described, it's rising of that some folks were doing the systems equations before the exponential. Yes, a little bit of that, let's just sort of rearranging and some of that is logistical in terms of calendar management and some of it is teacher preference, right? It just makes more sense to me, right? So it was a it was a big thing for for Dr. Chisholm and I as we were leading this to begin to say, we're picking a plan and we're going to stick with it and it may not be your plan, but we're going to hear you out and we're going to kind of talk it through together and we're going to we're all going to get on the same page and once we have that page, that's the page.
Okay. And then just I guess my question maybe for Dr. Tally. I know Dr. Lee kind of updated the board on the curriculum because we kind of tasked administration about what, three, four years ago about looking at curriculum and evaluating and that type. Could we get like maybe an update before the end of the school year of kind of where we are with that big spreadsheet of which curriculum we've looked at, which ones are still we're going to be looking at in the future? Is that?
Dr. Lee did that earlier this year.
Yeah, I know. Is that good, but we've already done quite a few just this semester. Can we get it updated maybe at the end of the year, the spreadsheet? Or or it was already it was projected?
It was it was, yeah, so, yep, 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 yep.
Thank you.
And I'll just say one more thing. This also allows for the more the the better use, increased use of common assessments.
All right.
I got something to add. I've saved it up, I guess. I appreciate the, you know, the pacing of the presentation. I appreciate how you go and reference the board policy and the strategic plan. That's that's very good framing. For me, I'm not an educator like some of the other people on the board so that those things help. And then I appreciate kind of relating back to the coursework so that the public can kind of see this impacts seventh grade, eighth grade, and that's very important. The and then what's important for I think me and the community is on slide 14 where it talks about we're here to to work on our curriculum and then we're here to work on instructional material. And then you can see it's going to be on the agenda going ahead and we're in that time we're letting for public comment. So we have an agenda item just like tonight where we approved textbooks. And so there wasn't a lot of discussion on that. We didn't go into further detail on that because there was a meeting and a prior presentation. So I think that's important to make comment on. So thanks for the presentation tonight.
I will not keep you long, but I do have a couple of questions. So Dacor is going to be the same text in seventh and eighth as well as, okay, yes, perfect. And can you remind me, so did we when we did a curriculum or curriculum update regarding Spanish, is Spanish doing are we doing the same thing as, okay, I just couldn't remember. And what about German? Are we still doing German?
So we do we do Spanish and French at the at the we offer Spanish and French at the middle school.
Okay.
And then we offer Spanish, French, American Sign Language, German, and Chinese at the high school.
At the high school, okay. My memory thought we did had done German at the at the middle school, so I'm sorry about that. And then I did have a really quick question on slide 10, as I was just taking a look at the high school, middle school math curriculum. I'm sorry, yes, 10. So I just wondered if this was a change or if I just don't remember. On for eighth graders with that are PA students or basically eighth graders that are taking geometry, was there a point where they didn't have to do honors geometry, but they could just do geometry?
No, the historical on that, you actually remember better than you than you're giving yourself credit for. So the what was happening when we started, it was it was called geometry, eighth grade class was called geometry. So it was kind of honors-y but not really that we did it wasn't great alignment, truth be told, right? So we all of those kids, they're two years accelerated. Those kids are going into our honors program at the high school. So we we spent some time aligning both resources and curriculum for the eighth grade honors geometry with the high school honors geometry. And that happened, that was, shoot, I was probably six, seven, eight years ago now. But so you remember correctly that we used to call that class geometry. We now call it honors geometry. There are not students for whom they finished eighth, seventh grade, Algebra I, for whom it's appropriate to go to a regular geometry class. If you struggled in algebra, then we'll we'll do algebra again. We'll get it we'll get it right for you and you'll still be accelerated. But almost, I mean, very, very almost, all of those kids are very, very active and retaliated and moving into the honors geometry class.
I thank you because I remember I remember just regular geometry and then when you when you got to freshman, you could either do the honors A, Algebra II or regular Algebra II. I thought that's what I remembered, so, because, thank you.
I just wanted to quickly compliment the teams, the committees that looked into the curriculum, pivoting in a way to choose a book that is really enhancing students and really their their education, preparing them for college. The peer reviewed is definitely being pushed in 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 new ways in higher education and the fact that you guys are hitting that harder and at this level is so important. In addition to that, focusing on the science part more so than because I do think a lot of students go into psychology thinking more so of the social sciences. So I was just very, very pleased by the 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 thought that went into choosing that text that will align itself with the the new requirements. And similarly with French one, the increasing cultural competence and and trying to find better ways to talk about this language, not just as it relates to one country but globally. I I mean, that is so important and what a what a gift and that that's where we should be in 2024. So I'm so happy to hear these upgrades and thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. I know it is a lot of work to look at these curriculums and we really appreciate the effort to look at refreshing them and choosing the right sources and go Boiler Makers.
Thank you for your support.
So now our last item is legislative advocacy and Board of Education update. We have some updates. I know Ms. Fosdick has some.
I do want to share that last Thursday I was able to join the newly formed Federal Relations Subcommittee of LEND, the Legislative Education Network of DuPage, to meet with U.S. Representatives Bill Foster and Sean Caston to discuss funding for federal programs that are most important to LEND member districts. The other subcommittee members included Kristen Fitzgerald, the LEND co-chair, and the District 203 Board of Education Vice President, Julie Hill, a Board of Ed member from District 41 in Glen Ellen, Dr. Robert Langman, the Superintendent of District 61 in Darien, and Doug Akarius, Superintendent of District 89, former Assistant Super for our own HR here. When surveyed, the member districts named the following federal programs as most critical: IDEA, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, Title I, the federal program that supports chronically economically challenged students, and then the federal nutrition program reimbursement for free and reduced lunch and meals for all. We shared with the legislators that the federal funding and we reminded them that for both IDEA and Title I have not kept pace with the costs of doing business and that we have increased enrollment in those programs. So we asked for the Congressmen's support on advocating for increased funding for those two really important programs. The federal nutrition program reimbursement is one of the only federal programs to pay its fair share, so we were able to thank them for that continued support for those important programs. Both of the meetings were really conversations and they were really it was a great learning experience. It was really enjoyable where we were able to share our district experiences with the legislators and they were able to learn more about how to continue to support public education within their constituencies. That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I sent everybody an email last Thursday on IASB governmental advocacy or legislative advocacy. It was kind of a mid-meeting that we had two weeks ago. It was primarily focused on pensions and Tier Two. And then you should have gotten an email from IASB on Friday if you didn't let me know, but it was a legislative update from IASB. We've been talking a lot about that thing because the email they sent out Friday did a really good job to kind of tell you which ones are which education bills are still in committee, which ones are hot, which ones are moving, which ones are going to the floor soon. So I know we're kind of all up on to date on that, but, you know, some interesting things coming down the pipe. So if anything happens quickly, I'm now on the text thing from the governmental relations team. So if something happens quick, I'll let the board know. I'll send an email, a do not reply email to let the board know that there's some education bill moving. Actually, probably Dr. Tally will hear before any of us do, but just in case the board wants information, I will send that as an informational email. That's it.
Yeah, thank thank you both for sharing. That just highlights the work of the board that's not just within our district. We are reaching out to state legislators and federal legislators to advocate for public education and the needs that we have in our district. I think that's incredibly important. There is a large unit district meeting on Friday where we also will get a chance to work with IASB to express our needs and with all other districts that have a large population. So it's some continued important work for us and I appreciate everyone involved with that. So thank you.
President Donahue, can I give a short update on our League of Innovative Schools Conference? Dr. Tally, myself, and our SEL Wellness Coordinator, Dawn Forkner, also joined, as well as our partner, Amit Tucker of our referral GPS. It was it was from my perspective, it was a very interesting conference to attend because there were really no other school board members there. It was it was primarily superintendents and then directors of different programs. So it it was interesting to hear their conversations and much of the content over I I think sounded a lot like what we might be discussing at school board conferences, but with different detail and specificity, obviously, because these are subject matter experts. But Dr. Tally and I got a chance to visit a very small school district in Long Island called Mineola. We got to visit middle school and high school. It was it was wonderful to see what thing what types of things are being done in other schools, a lot of hands-on experience. I personally was on a track where I saw a lot of shop work, wood carving, metal work with metal, work with bags and trying to have students feel feel have the experience of applying the knowledge in the classrooms to to working with their hands. And you could just see the excitement. These were very well-spoken students who gave us tours and with excitement showed us their coding and how they went about doing it and entering robotic competitions and things of that nature. I I think it reinforced for me the the hope that we want to be able to instill in our district with perhaps smaller classrooms or things like SAM Labs where these where our students aren't are creating, are are collaborating and creating and applying the content. So that that really was my takeaway from that visit. It it was just nice to to see how another school district functions and and just kind of kind of look in the window and and see how they do that. That was exciting. The rest of the conference was attending sessions. Once again, I keep gravitating towards AI sessions just because that's on my mind and I'm I'm curious to see on a national level what's being done. And it seems like it's starting with policy work, you know, a lot of policy writing and and kind of guessing and adapting and learning and trying a lot of new things and learning from each other. And I think we're no different than that. Hopefully, we'll be able to hear more about our AI work in our district, but it's interesting. And lastly, our presentation. Once again, after IASB, our state conference presentation, we got wonderful feedback and we had the same experience at the national level. For those who did watch our presentation, they walked away at the very least knowing that there is a possibility to do this kind of work with mental health clinics. And I think we were able to help them think about it in in a new creative way based on where they're at and where their needs are at and what their resources look at. So, you know, it overall a great conference in an exciting city and we got blessed with good weather. So we just had a we had a we had a wonderful time, a great learning experience. I'm thankful to be able to have gone. Thanks.
Thank you very much for that. That was a very important topic for us and it's like just wonderful that we've been able to spread that information to not only within our state but also outside of the state. So thank you. So with that, I need a motion and a second.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yeah, adjourned.[1770.42]